Can you hear that noise?
They can't hear us.
Okay, try now.
Testing, one, two, three, testing. You just let me know whenever you're ready.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Are we ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good evening. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General R., Chapter 38, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the zoning Board of Appeals meeting is tonight, Wednesday, January 17th, 2024, at 7:00, but we're starting a little late, 7:10, in Meeting Room 124, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. Additional public access to this meeting shall be done via Zoom online video conferencing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and provide comments during allocated windows. To join, follow the web link or call the dial-in number listed on the Town of Norfolk website. Please be advised, this meeting will be audio and video recorded for future rebroadcast by Norfolk Community Television. NCTV livestreams all-time meetings on their YouTube channel link. Thank you. I call the meeting to order. This evening, we're not going to have any new applications in front of us, it's just how the schedule worked out. Tonight, we did have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Brogan, but because we didn't have a full board, I think he's agreed to come in next month, or at our next meeting, and we'll speak to him. He's submitted an application for us to consider, or I should say for the select board to consider to be appointed as an associate ZBA member. So I believe he's going to come meet with us next month, we're looking forward to that. Moving on, relative to deliberations, the first one, 5 Carriage Court, we're going to hold off for a few minutes till we have the right board members in the room who can vote. Well, I guess we could do, we have enough people here.
We do.
We have, regarding 5 Carriage Court, we have a letter from the applicant, addressed to Richard McCarthy, Town Planner. Dear Richard, this letter is dated January 16, 2024, application for hearing on 5 Carriage Court. Dear Richard, this letter is in regard to my application for the hearing for 5 Carriage Court, Norfolk, Mass, that was discussed during the December 20th, '23 ZBA hearing. Due to further information requested, I wish to withdraw my application without prejudice. Very truly yours, Thomas Burkhile. So that being said, the applicant has asked us to consider a, according to withdraw the application without prejudice, so I will entertain a motion to withdraw the application without prejudice.
I second your motion.
You want to make the motion? May?
Do a roll call vote, because you have people in.
Okay. Josephine has made that motion, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor will do it by strong roll call vote. Tim Martin, aye.
Josephine Cordae, aye.
Chris McDevitt, aye.
Working Star, aye.
Great, it has passed. Next on our agenda list is 14 Keeney Pond Road Special Permit. We voted favorably on that last month, we have the decision here, so board members that are here, that were here last month, if you can sign that, and those of you on Zoom, I believe that would be you, Chris, you were here for that, your next opportunity, if you can come by and sign that with Elaine, that would be wonderful. Next on the agenda, under deliberations, 160 C Congress Street, it was an application for a special permit and variance, and since we don't have the full board that was here before, we were in deliberations at that time, and I think the best thing to do now is, I'd entertain a motion that we vote to continue that deliberation to our next meeting, likely scheduled in February. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I can second that, Chris McDevitt.
Okay. All those in favor to continue that meeting to our next meeting in February, roll call vote, Tim Martin, aye.
Josephine Cordae, aye.
Chris McDevitt, aye.
Why do I, should I? Thank you. Time for Town Planner updates, so I'll turn it over to you, Rich.
Thank you. There's just one item under the Town Planner update, there was a site visit with Mass Housing regarding Cranberry Heights 40B proposed development. It's, if you recall, I think I actually probably talked about this earlier on in the year at one of the ZBA meetings, but in a conceptual standpoint, it wasn't, hadn't progressed, but they have filed with Mass Housing. The site visit was conducted, I forget the date, so I won't put that in the record, but it was just a short time ago. They are submitted for their project eligibility letter, with discussions from Mike Brisby from Mass Housing. We anticipate that they'll be before the board in probably May of this year, in terms of.
Is that just because of single families?
Yes.
That came in?
Yes.
Is it still 50 single families?
It's actually 52.
Oh, even better.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one.
So no housing diversity?
Nope, it's coming in as it was previously presented.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll.
So we anticipate that likely in the late spring, early summer?
Yes. And I do anticipate, you know, there probably will be a significantly larger crowd, members of the public, so what I'm thinking, we will look into probably the library to hold that hearing, because now with COVID, you know, this room is significantly reduced in terms of overall capacity with the tables and so forth, and it's hard to predict how many people, but just to be on the conservative side, we'll, we'll schedule for the library, we'll check on the scheduling.
Okay. Rich, in the past, we've had, we've had representation during a lot of these 40Bs. Do you anticipate the town will have representation for us?
Yeah, so in terms of representation, you will have that. The Town Council's office, Harrington and heap, will be representing the ZBA and will be attending the hearings. If you recall, from town meeting this past fall, we did anticipate that we might see this, so we did go to town meeting and get authorization for appropriation to have that additional services as opposed to coming through the general legal services budget. And beyond that, like I said, we'll.
It depends, like, they're looking for, they're looking for a PEL right now, that's what they're applying for?
Yeah, they applied for a PEL, correct.
All right, so they, so you got notice that they've applied for a PEL?
We did, yep. I think in, is it in the share drive now?
Okay, have you hit up Mass Housing yet for, for consultants?
Not as of yet, no.
Okay. Okay, because I think as soon as you get notice that they're looking for a PEL, it's either that or when it's issued, they become eligible for their, for their consultant.
Okay.
That would be good, because before we get into this and start having torch burning, if we could have that person, I know that the town has their own housing person, but it's good to have a third party that we can kind of throw in the middle to do like a quick Q and A and info session on 40B and where we stand, so we can help keep the masses kind of understanding what the rules are from right off the bat, so it doesn't get quite to, I mean, it's going to, you know, it'll be what it is, but I think giving some cool, that kind of helps create some of, some of it, so it doesn't, like I said, we don't have to beat as many dead horses if somebody gives a quick 15-minute training on what 40B is, where we stand it and what the ZBA's role is.
Okay.
It takes me out, they'll take heat off of all of us.
Would that person typically be at the initial meeting, or prior to, or through?
That person goes to everything, so whenever the town meets with the developer, architects, basically the stuff that we don't go to, plus all of our meetings, and so that money is paid through, the money that pays the consultant is provided through that housing partnership, which is provided them through the state, and so every time a town gets a 40B application, they're entitled to assistance from Mass Housing to deal with this. And so they give you basically a third party to help deal with your whole project and help kind of steer it, and it's cool because they come with their own stable of people when you need design review consultants and your review for your engineering. It's very helpful to use the people that they routinely use because it keeps all the communication fast and tight.
Do you know, do we, do we get a choice on who that third party may be, or do they just assign it?
We can put in a request for who we'd like, I would not say in public who those people are, but I certainly would have some people that I would encourage Rich to put on the application, you get a top three.
Oh, okay. And this is through the partnership, this is the Mass Housing Partnership you're talking about, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so there's an application on the website, it's a, it's a technical assistance, and it's basically an entitlement, so this one of the ones where at home is just like, take it.
Sure, okay.
It's money that we don't have to pay, and it takes a little bit of. And it, sorry, my doctor may be speaking, you're fine. There must be a deer outside again, but it deprays, it can help kind of deprave some legal costs, because they can kind of help do some of the negotiating as well.
Okay.
And look over like the conditions when we get to that point, there's a lot of conditions with that, but it could be very helpful to, or at least a staff person, to have that person also.
Great. Excellent. And I assume Town Council may have some input on, input or some recommendations, suggestions on, on that, they may or may not, but I think I'd get them involved if you have it, when you get to that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely.
Put a good team together.
You know, you see the rodeo pretty frequently, and so, but I feel like I have opinions on everyone. But it, it has, it is, you know, because they tend to go through a lot of design review because the engineering does tend to be, you know, it kind of helps to have somebody else run a point on that, particularly from a share perspective, because otherwise it helps up the share a lot.
Great, thank you.
Just putting it out there.
Oh, thank, great, that's good information, thank you, helpful. Anything else, Rich?
The only other, well, in terms of minutes, I don't know if we have.
Yeah, we'll go over the minutes.
Okay.
Maybe, I don't know if there's anybody in the public on Zoom, if they have any questions for Rich, or, you know, we've skipped to some housekeeping things that there really wouldn't be any questions on, but I want to open it up to anybody on Zoom, if anybody has a question in particular, I guess for Rich at this point, even the board, but I don't know if anybody's out there, but.
There's a taker, hands up for Michael, oh gosh, I'm going to murder him, sorry.
Right, there is, yep.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mike Turese, 60, just a couple of questions. In terms of the, so they've officially made their, some of the Mass Housing, is this the next step in process, the town is supposed to get officially and make at least initial, submit the initial comments? It's been a few years since we started, like, I mean, the makes processing over here, just trying to reestablish the process here.
Yeah, so they, yes.
Sorry. Oh, I was going to say, what's the PEL issue, is the 90-day kind of period that is for department heads? And so Rich will get the notification, and then it goes for your internal circulation, usually police, fire, DPW kind of has a bigger first count, and that gets collected and returned.
And Rich, will there be any kind of opportunity for the company to engage with that process until that's just totally internal?
So I understand that's, that's an internal process?
Will those plans be available for public viewing?
If the town be willing to solicit and take in input comments for their, being heard?
Well, certainly, when we have the hearings, absolutely, when we open it up here.
If we have a formal application, I don't know that we can actually start taking any testimony on the matter, because the notification that an eligibility letter has been issued is not the same thing as them actually applying to come to the Board of Appeals. And so the ZBA, if we start taking early testimony, I think it could be argued that we would be prejudicial in our hearing of the case.
So the public's going to have the same opportunity as every board member here, so.
Well, I realize it's happening, so I'm just thinking about initial response letter. Speaking for myself, obviously just speaking for myself, but I'm certainly, I believe, I collect sentiment that two neighborhoods that are going to be impacted by this, you know, 50, 50 single family houses, base, those are these two small neighborhoods, it's certainly something that we're not excited about.
It's a good question, I mean, from my standpoint, no, no one's going to prevent you from submitting your thoughts and writing, so.
Yeah, I mean, you're, yes, I guess that's a good point. If you want to submit comments, you certainly can, I don't know, I didn't, when we had the site visit, I didn't get the sense from the representative, Michael Busby, that Busby was soliciting public comments at that point, because they're in the, they're in the review process for the project eligibility letter.
But it doesn't sound like at that preliminary stage, there's a formal way, so I would just take advantage, if you can look at it, put your thoughts together and submit, and that's what I would do, because I don't think there's any meeting opportunity for you.
Yep.
Not at that, not at that stage, typically what happens for the project eligibility is that it's a sketch plan and a pretty rough concept, and so, but it's, it's all pretty roughed out, so usually what we expect to see is a pretty, it's not, usually they're, usually it's, once they start fleshing out the plans, what they come in initially, it's not necessarily the same thing that they're going to fully apply to the board, but so their concept may change a bit, and once they start doing polar drawings, they have a better understanding of where their weapons are, what they can't build on, and so we start seeing things change, and so I think that's also part of the reason that they don't take a lot of public comment early on.
I understand that, I'm just, I'm just hoping that the initial response letter would reflect the thoughts of the neighborhood and that the side, building the bad sides, particularly on, you know, so, ex crossing and sort of having a, maybe moving overhead in some, in the future, it's just, you know, not just now.
I suspect that's the best place to address your comments at that moment? Well, I guess what I'm going to tell, I'm going to try to give you, if you want to address those comments early on, and you want them to make them into your letter, or make them into the letter from the town, you should address them to the selectmen, because it's there, it's their decision to comment on the views of the neighborhood, that's kind of their role in the, in the operation, and so you as a private citizen probably cannot submit comments correctly at this phase, but when there is a PEL filed, you should write to your selectmen so that your comments are reflected in their comments, that's the way to do it.
Well, I can tell you at least the comments that are going to them will, so, will reflect some of the comments from the neighborhood already, because we already are, you know, aware of some of those comments previously, so those, well, actually, some of those comments were made during the site visit anyway.
But I'd certainly put your thoughts together, and like Courtney's suggesting, you know, the way to do it would be through the select board, so I'd certainly do that.
And when is that 90-day long start?
It's after the, it's after the PEL is actually issued by Mass Housing, so right now, they've only gotten the application, so when Mass Housing gets the application as the subsidizing agency, they have 90 days from proceed of application to review it, and if you don't kind of do their initial review, so you're kind of in the land of 90-day windows right now, so they've got 90, and then the town gets 90. town gets 90.
And Rich, may I request that, you know, some of the contracts in the neighborhood that, that projects that pass that 90-day clock starts ticking? If you just send something out to one of the neighbors and it's good for them, it'll start before that, but just so we know when the clock starts.
I will ask for clarification, I'm only saying that because we, Michael Brisby didn't give us 90 days to comment.
He's not, what's the PEL that's issued?
Oh, in terms of-
The PEL?
Oh, you mean after it's issued?
Yeah, because when, yeah, you don't have 90 days right now, right now, they're, they're 90 days, it doesn't mean anything like super limited, they're gonna walk pretty quickly. But after the PEL is issued, the town has 90 days to do the department head comments and other boards and commissions, and so, you know, can, can review or the selectmen. But because ours, our comment is only gonna be in the 40B, like, what we can review, I think the selectmen are probably better, sort of, you know, kind of the, you know, repeat applications and intensity of development. That's gonna be reflected anyway by, I'm actually inspired and DPW, because everybody will talk about stress on local resources.
All right, so, so, just my request-
Rich, I don't know, based to what-
Do you get notification of the neighborhood when that-
On the notification, which is wonderful, I just, I wonder if there's a way that we can put that on the ZBA or on a website, whether it's select, select board or ZBA, just a general notification about that? Because making you in charge of notification, if you miss somebody, but goes to his neighbor, the neighbor doesn't tell, you know, I just want to put it out there as many ways as we can, if possible, you know? So something to think about, I don't know. Yeah, but something to think about, if we can do, if we can go on the town webpage or ZBA or select board or all of the above, I think the more, the better.
I'm gonna give you a different alternative. Okay? Michael, since you're online right now, if you want to gather some comments and send them to me, you're fine, I'll, I'll pass them along, but I don't want to get down in the road of, of the notification, because we're not-
That's what I'm thinking globally on the website, just to-
Well, I don't want to get, because what'll happen, I can tell you this from past experience, some person's not gonna know about it, and then they're gonna say, I didn't know about it, so I don't want to go beyond what the notification processes are.
Okay.
You know, only from past, but Michael, if you want to gather comments and get them over to me within the next, we have 15 days from yesterday to get them in. What's that?
That's during, that's during, that's from the site visit, that's during IPHC, that's not ECU, but they're not, Mass Housing, that's during Mass Housing's first 90-day window. So they have to do, so they've gotten their application, they did the site visit, and they need to respond within 90 days, which is why they gave the town a 15-day timeline to respond from the site visit. So that they can do their work.
Is this, is this the department head's, or this is separate?
No, this is, this is just about the site visit, this is just the people who are at the site visit for rodeo, most preliminary rodeo of all of the rodeos.
That's right, so I will send that.
Rich, does the town have social media?
We do.
Like a Facebook page?
Yeah.
I could name us a cute little graphic that could be run whenever the PEL is issued, if there's anybody in Finals Camp, the PEL is the town's social media. I, I would be willing to, to take five, well, not five minutes, about 15 seconds of my life on Canva and drop you some social media image, just, just for the, for the town's social media. And that might be, because eventually there'll be a project page and things like that to check, but it's a-
I know once the process will have plenty of, and there's full practice to take some of that.
Yeah, I don't, I sympathize with Rich because any special, it's basically individual notification is a special notification and that creates a bad situation.
Yeah, I was trying to avoid individualized notification, I wanted this global.
It's social media. It's like personal media, because that's just good practice.
Yeah, we're pretty close to neighborhoods and most of the world.
Rich, do you want to take the social media approach?
You want to think about it?
Does that work for you?
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, so we're talking, I mean, we're kind of, we're talking about two different things, though, right? So we're talking about once it's issued, in terms of the PEL. And then Mike, I think Michael's talking about before it's being issued, submitting comments, correct?
I didn't realize, again, that was my original question, I thought it was some sort of initial reaction, it sounds like there is, that's that 15-day number they give them. And then beyond that, there's a more, more vast opportunity, going to department heads and others to weigh in, maybe the town.
So we could certainly, once the PEL is issued, we could put that on the website, that's not a problem, to do that. But in terms of the comment, I'm, now, prior to that, if you want to send me comments, I can always pass them along, you can take them or reject them, I don't, you know. Yeah. I'm not opposed to, to include them, for sure.
And I certainly understand, to individualize, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you had anything else to share from, you know, if there's a schedule on, sidewalk, sidewalk, or anything else that was, you know, whatever, and, you know, it's a work to be done there.
Yeah, that's, that's all what's gonna become as once it gets here to, so those issues were raised, so my expectation is that we're gonna revisit them when they formally get here with the application. Because those comments are going in now, from the comments, about the sidewalk and water and so forth.
Okay.
With the sidewalks, I'm worried that it's-
That's you.
What's that?
I thought these are two separate issues, we have this, this, and that's all they have.
So Lawrence Street sidewalk, the one that had the town meeting votes for the, is that Lawrence Street, is that the sidewalk?
That is, they were requesting additional funds from the portion to the west of Eagle Bra, but my understanding was, funding was there for, we already started doing the network board this fall for sidewalk from Eagle Bra down to the bridge. It's various to see what the schedule, so I can go back there if you're down.
So that sidewalk will be done in the spring, that's part of the weight crossing?
That's, that hasn't changed, that's still proceeding?
No, that, that's proceeding as, as planned.
Right, okay. And that portion of the road get paved, will that's taken up?
Yeah, it's gonna be paved to binder, and then the question is probably more so around the top coat, you know, in terms of when that'll be, we gotta figure that out.
Okay. All right, but they want to prepare it, it's, okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, have a good evening. Thank you. Rich, anything else under, plan updates?
None of myself, nope.
Okay, so we're gonna have some activity. Or in?
Yes.
Is he, is he, times ahead, all right. Next on the agenda, approve minutes. I was looking at the minutes, they're drafted fine, we have two here, we have November 15th, December 20th, I'm just looking to see who could vote on these, who was present. You know, it looks to me, unless I'm misreading them, it looks like if we took the, we need four votes.
No, three.
Oh, three's fine, okay, so we-
Three's good.
Three, we have myself, Josephine, no. Okay, so, no, we don't, we don't have the right three to vote, December 20th, let me look at November 15th, that were present, myself, Josephine could vote, and Chris, so we could at least vote the November 15th minutes. And Courtney, you could vote those too. You were present, November 15th. I don't, you know, I've looked at them tonight again, I don't know if anybody else has a chance or a memory of them, but I'll make a motion that we approve the minute meetings from November 15th, 2023. If there's a second?
I'll second that motion.
Josephine seconds that. Roll call vote, Tim Martin, aye.
Chris McDev, aye.
Josephine Cordae, aye.
Courtney Sterling, aye.
Thank you. And I just want to confirm on the December 20th, we need four vote, we need three votes. David's not here tonight, he was present. I'm here, I was there, Joseph's not here tonight, Josephine wasn't there, Chris was there and he's here this evening, Courtney wasn't there, so we don't have three.
All right, do that next meeting.
We'll hold off on that, we'll hold off on December 20th. I mean, the minutes themselves look fine to me, we'll take that up next time.
Very good reading.
Yeah. There's no other correspondence. Next on the agenda is business. Okay, we have the, oh, simple, housekeeping, next meeting. We're originally scheduled to meet February 21st, we want to move that date, so if I can get a motion to move the next meeting date to February 28th, that would be great.
I second that motion.
I'm, I'll make the motion, Josephine seconds it, roll call vote, all in favor, roll call vote, Tim Martin, aye. This is just to move the next meeting from February 21st to February 28th. Thank you.
Courtney Sterling, aye.
Thank you. And on the agenda was published, was regarding the, oh, I guess we could do this. 10-oh, old Populatic Way?
No, that's just-
Oh, that's, that's the preview.
That's just a preview.
Okay, that's just a preview. The, and then the other, the other item that I just skipped over, we'll address next time, it's, it is on the agenda, just so you know why I'm skipping over it, is, we're gonna vote the calendar down the road a little bit for the June meeting, but rather than get into a discussion, I think it's best to wait to the chairs here, next month, we can discuss, we can discuss the June schedule then with, with the chair here at that time, rather than try to pick dates, not enough folks are here. Next month, it looks like when we do meet, we'll have a, a modification request for 90 Pond Street.
Yes.
And just a reminder, now our next meeting is February 28th at 7:00 PM.
Can I borrow your pen?
Sure. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda this evening, am I missing anything?
No, you're not.
Okay. Is there anybody on Zoom who hasn't had a chance, that's out there?
Chris has one.
I'm here, but it's chickens.
Okay.
I have something very important. Chris? Can you see me?
No, I don't have any, none of them back, isn't 10-oh, Populatic, isn't that the one where they're taking the building down right off the plate? Isn't this the second year, is extended or 30 years?
Uh, this is the third?
This might be, yeah, I forget.
Might be third. One of the things that-
The decision was in 2021, well, that's when it's, that's when it was, that's the decision number, so, 2021 or 11.
Which was from a, yeah, it's, it's been gone a few times.
Yeah, I remember the discussion last time.
And were you able to share with him the, the lost and found department we have?
We have lost and found, Chris McDev, are these your glasses by chance, the Nike sunglasses?
I got two pairs here, I'm good.
Nike, Nike sunglasses?
I figured it had to be you.
Courtney?
Why, why me?
Because I'm not hip enough for Nike.
You're kind of the Nike sunglasses kind of guy.
I don't think I have any Nike ones.
All right, all right, we tried.
These are pretty nice sunglasses, I think I might have to take them off of my side.
All right, there's something else on the agenda, so I, we'll take, we'll entertain a motion to close the hearing, or close the meeting.
Um, I second that motion.
Okay, I made it first, it's been seconded, roll call vote, Tim Martin, aye.
Chris McDev, aye.
Courtney Sterling, aye.
Josephine Cordae, aye.
The meeting is closed, peace out, thank you. Thank you for-